The second day of the third regular session of the twentieth Congress will now come to order. May we all rise for a moment of silent prayer. Chief Clerk, roll call.
Senator Alec, Senator Aritas, Senator Viguerre, Chairman Coulon, Floor Leader Harper, Senator Conman, Vice Speaker Moses, Senator Nett, Senator Panuelo,
May my
Senator Perman, Senator Romolo, Senator Rizmaul, Senator Wally, Speaker Semina.
Yes.
Mrs. Speaker, eleven members are present.
We have quorum to transact business this morning. Next item for Leader Harper.
Thank you, Mrs. Speaker, and good morning to you and all honorable members as well as our staff and all those who are observing from the gallery. Good morning to you all. As usual, Mrs. Speaker, I move to dispense with the reading of the journal.
It's moved and seconded that we dispense with the reading of our journal. Those in favor of the motion, say yes. A voice no, motion carried. We now dispense with the reading of our journal. Next item, Chief Clerk.
Item five, Presidential Communications, there are none, Mrs. Speaker.
Next item.
Item six, FSM Supreme Court Communications, none.
Next item.
Item seven, Member Communications, we have one, it's number twenty dash fifteen.
Okay, sign that, Chief Clerk. Make sure you read that report carefully. And between the lines too. Next item.
Item eight, Departmental Communications, none, Mrs. Speaker.
Continue.
Item nine, Agency or Governmental Authority Communications, none. Item ten, State Communications, also none. Item eleven, State Supreme Court Communications, there are none. Item twelve, Municipal or Town Communications, none. And item thirteen, Foreign Government Communications, we have one, number twenty dash twenty-three.
Speaker, honor of privilege.
Sign that, Chief Clerk. Proceed. Chairman Panuelo, you have the floor.
Thank you, Speaker. Good morning to you and good morning to all members. Speaker, I have a list of individuals who are here observing our session. If you would kindly allow me to introduce them on our behalf. I'd like to introduce Mr. Amando Barnabas, who is one of our FSM National Police Officers here, and Mr. Kim Alex, also FSM Police. Let's give him a round of recognition, please. We also have a good friend, Mr. Belan Yoma, who's been diligent in observing our session, FSM Supreme Court. Let's also welcome him and give him a round of recognition. And last but not the least, of course, Petrus Pelsisar. Please, let's welcome him from the President's office and give him a round of recognition. Thank you. Alangan, Speaker.
Thank you, Chairman Panuelo. Indeed, I join you on behalf of Congress in welcoming our citizens who are interested in observing our sessions. Thank you for that. Next item, I'm in order of the day. Next item, item fourteen.
Item fourteen, Standing Committee Reports, Mrs. Speaker. We have an awaiting list, number twenty dash twenty-one.
Short recess, subject to call of the chair. Congress back in session. Next item.
Item fifteen, Special Committee Reports. We have one, and it's number twenty dash zero eight, by the Committee to Wait on the President.
Chairman Romolo.
Motion to adopt Standing Committee Report number twenty dash zero eight.
It's moved and seconded that Congress adopt Special Committee Report number twenty dash zero eight. That's the report from the Committee to Wait on the President. Okay, since we just got it, short recess, subject to call of the chair. Congress back in session. We're still on the discussion of Special Committee Report twenty dash zero eight. Take it from here, Chairman Romolo.
Thank you, Speaker. As I mentioned earlier, as there are some agendas that were presented to us during the meeting. The cabinet were there, Vice President was there to meet with us. And as we convey that we are in town and ready to transact business, so they gave us the agendas on some issues that they are in need of Congress action, especially the, some of the proposed bill that are pending with Congress and are asking for Congress action on, namely, the tax, the seabed mining, and the foreign investment bill. Also with that, the Secretary of Finance also make some, make a comments to reiterate what she have sent to us as the referee on the balance, the projected balance, that it's not including this current, but the budget that she send down was a carryover of six point five. No, it's not including the current projection for this current fiscal year. The six point five, it's all carryover from the previous year. So they, she indicated that there will be a forthcoming, and she also say that it will be an increase, a slight increase with this year's projection. But we asked that they, they put it in black and white and send it to us, and they assure us that it will be forthcoming while we're in session. Also, other request, of course, the supplemental budget there also may mention that there will be a supplemental, but there will be a forthcoming there, asking the departments to compile, then send down for a review and action. As we go down the agenda, the issue on the reimbursement from the World Bank was also on the agenda and brought up with the thorough discussion on the result and the status of that reimbursement. And with what presented to us, I think, I myself weren't satisfied with what they presented to us of the delay and the expected timing to get the reimbursement. Because I, last time we met during a hearing, it was, they were talking weeks. But yesterday, they're talking months, that we will be seeing the reimbursement in months. They point out that it could be in June. So we expressed our disappointment and asked that they pull together their action and to help to facilitate the earliest that we can get the reimbursement. They, as they reported, that there were a consultation meeting between the parties in Honolulu. And that's where we feel that if that, there is a consultation meeting, why should it take this long? But as they claim, it's now, it's with the other party to sign, and then the process could move forward. So we asked that they get together again with the other party and resolve the issue so the reimbursement can be made at the earliest. There are also requests for unpaid funding for services that were provided but not paid. We also asked, the committee also asked why these services were made without, or the contract were entered into without the funding. So we learned that these services were, and contract were entered into and was not paid as a result of the Jango withholding of the two million for infrastructure. So we, they, as they indicated, we, that the government is obligated to pay this outstanding to these companies and individuals who provided the service. So we, they asked that we support and maybe we look into ways to address the issue on the unpaid bills. Also with the agenda, they also make mention of nominations. If, if we can take up for these nominations that are before us, and namely, the membership on the board for Norma, which I believe there were two vacancies for Pompei and Yap. I believe that it's need to act upon. Also with the nomination of the board members on Norma, there is also the port, the consul general position in Portland that I believe we also have the nominations and the report, confirmation hearing report with us. That's pretty much, I would also ask the other members who can also, if I miss out anything that were discussed. And the report, it's pretty much self-explanatory on the discussions and what need to be done. Thank you, Mrs. Speaker.
Thank you, Chairman Romolo. Any other comments from the members of Committee to Wait? Short recess, short recess, being called for, subject to call of the chair. Congress back in session. We're still on discussion of Special Committee Report twenty dash eight. Any further discussion? If none, Chairman Panuelo.
I defer to Chairman Wally, asked for the floor earlier.
Okay, Chairman Wally, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mrs. Speaker. Good morning to you and members and everyone in the gallery this morning. In regarding the report submitted by Committee to Wait on the President, myself, I was disappointed in that a lot of our questions were not answered. Regarding the forthcoming supplemental budget, they don't have any figures that they wanted to provide us. So you can only imagine that since the revenue is six point five, that supplemental will be close to that amount. On that, figures we owe to PMU Finance, the DCNI submitted to Congress the figures without, or not going through the finance. So Finance had no idea that these things were forwarded to Congress. Also on the reimbursement from World Bank, first they told us it's gonna be two to three weeks after signature by Telecom. And then we continue talking, then learn that it may go on until maybe four or five months from today. So a lot of our questions were not answered, and I was very, well, I was not disappointed. I was very disappointed. That's my comment on that report submitted by our committee. Thank you, Mrs. Speaker.
Yes, thank you, Chairman Wally. That's important to note. Chairman Panuelo.
Yes, Speaker, I want to also say a few words on the report by the Committee to Wait on the President. I thank the committee, the chairman and members for doing a good job in reporting what we can get from the executive on the priority areas before Congress during this session. I too, Speaker, wish to express disappointment because I think from the beginning we were led to think that during this session, even though we delayed this session, the third regular session of a special, I'm sorry, session of Congress, we are not talking about weeks but months from now. So it's disappointing because you recall, Speaker and members, that we held back some of the big ticket items that we were supposed to appropriate in our regular budget bill, which included the trust fund, but we eventually gave some money to the trust fund, five million, and the port security improvement was one million we held back, and a very important one. Also with the RND Committee, the Tourism Development Fund has not been appropriated. So some of us are more informed on where we are and why the money hasn't reached Congress yet, but we hope that soon that will be done so that what we need to attend to on the priority areas for funding is done sooner rather than later. Speaker, on the items that the executive also asked, which pertains to your RND Committee, I want to say that the bill on the seabed mining is being worked on right now. Report is being worked on because we've taken out the stage and ready to do it. On the foreign investment bill, I'm not sure because state has asked us to hold back, but they have not come in with substantive input to guide us where we take this because this is also important. Speaker, and then lastly, maybe some of the members of the committee can answer, but why is the additional carryover fund not yet reported to Congress as that's required by law? Is it because the audit has not been completed fully? Or what are we waiting for that that's not included in the revenue protection report from Finance? So maybe one of them can answer, or maybe our co-chairman of Ways and Means Committee is more attuned to knowing why that's not reported yet. Since January is supposed to be the month to get the audit report and results of that report to Congress, if we can be enlightened on that. Thank you, Speaker.
Thank you, Chairman Panuelo. Yes, it's true, I think you're, as Chairman, your works are noted. You've done quite a bit, especially on the corporate law. And on this seabed mining, I think it's good we have it in the books, on the books, and whenever we want to activate it, we can do that as it becomes necessary. The foreign investment, it's true, it's something that we need to really look at because of the, you know, economic impact of our, you know, widely varied foreign investment laws from state to state. But I guess it would be good to have that taken up in one of the SNLCs if it comes to it. So, you know, all the states can come together with the national government and resolve for what to do about it. For revenues, yes, we wait for them when they, as pointed out in the report, this six point five is from prior years. So the one from last fiscal year for the carryover, we haven't gotten that. So I think we need to wait for Finance to come up with there. Well, the report is somewhat positive on that note. They said there is, they're working on a report for increase, likely that there will be an increase in revenue projection. So maybe that's what's coming up. Anyway, thank you for the comments, Chairman Panuelo. Anything else? Any other comments? If none, there is no objection. Discussion will be closed. So let's vote. Those in favor of the adoption of Special Committee Report number twenty dash eight, say yes. A voice no, motion carried. Special Committee Report number twenty dash eight is adopted by Congress. Next report.
There are no more reports or Special Committee Reports.
Next item.
Item sixteen, Assignment Measures and Communications. We have a referral sheet twenty dash forty-six.
Members and Chairman and members, take a look at the referral sheet for your planning purposes. Next item.
Under Unfinished Business, item seventeen, we have a CP number twenty dash ninety-two for First Reading, which was deferred from last session to this special, I mean, to this session of Congress. CP number twenty dash ninety-two is a bill for an act to amend section 605 of Title IX of the Code of the Federated States of Micronesia annotated to create a new special pole in place located outside of the Federated States of Micronesia and for other purposes.
Short recess, subject to call of the chair. Congress back in session. Chairman Romolo, you have the floor.
Motion to recommend CP number twenty dash ninety-two to the Committee on Jango.
It's moved and seconded that CP number twenty dash ninety-two be recommitted to the Committee on Judiciary and Governmental Operations. Those in favor of the motion, say yes. A voice no, motion carried. Said, bill is recommitted to Jango Committee. Next view. Next item.
Yeah, item eighteen, Bill Calendar, there are none, Mrs. Speaker.
Short recess, subject to call of the chair. Congress back in session. We're still on the Bill Calendar. Any bill? If none, next item, Chief Clerk.
Item nineteen, Resolution Calendar, none, Mrs. Speaker.
Next item.
Item twenty, Introduction of Bills and Resolutions.
If you have any measure to introduce, please pass them on to Chief Clerk. Next item.
Item twenty-one, Miscellaneous Communications, there are none.
Next item.
Item twenty-two, Miscellaneous Business.
You have any miscellaneous business?
Speaker.
None. Floor Leader Harper.
Thank you, Mrs. Speaker. During this miscellaneous business, I want to raise my concern relating to the operational activities of the so-called CIA, Caroline Island Air. It is my understanding that the airline was created by FSM Law and all the assets, especially the planes, were purchased by FSM money to service our people, especially in the outer island of Yap, Pompei, and Chu. Right now, according to one of the port members, the pilot and almost all the employees are in Yap right now, doing services with our new plane from China between Yap and Palau. And the way I look at the business at this time, it seems to be owned by family since the pilot is serving as the CEO, the wife is serving as the accountant, and just recently I learned that a daughter is also being hired as to the position of that daughter, I really don't know. But I really want to ask whatever committee would be responsible for CIA to look into it and have oversight with the port members as well as those employees who are working with CIA. It is kind of frustrating to see that the people in the outer island of FSM are being neglected for the services that they're, they're really needing. You know, it's been about two years that we've been appropriating money for the extension of the airways in the outer islands, especially on my island of Da. But until now, nothing has been done. And the question is, what is the need of extending the airstrip or the runway if that new plane will be coming to serve between Palau and Yap? But I guess the intention of extending the airways in the outer islands is to accommodate the new plane that would really serve the need of our people in the outer island of FSM. Thank you, Mrs. Speaker.
Thank you, Floor Leader Harper, for raising a legitimate issue facing our outer islanders and the FSM. It is true, Caroline Island Air was created by Congress by law. So it's kind of, we kind of assume that they should be following that law. But it's good you pointed that out. I know they are in Yap to service, to pick up the service, airline service between Palau and Yap after United decided to cut the flights between Palau and Yap. So that's what my understanding of why they're there. And it's good, I think it's Committee on TNC, Transportation Communications, that has jurisdiction over Caroline Island Air. So we will instruct Chairman when he arrives to look into that and see if they can conduct oversight hearings on that issue. Thank you, Floor Leader, for bringing
Speaker.
Yes, Romolo.
Thank you, Speaker. In the same line with what the good floor leader have brought up, I believe that what we are facing now, or the CIA is facing now, is the lack or the shortage of pilot. We have the plane, the planes are sitting here at the hangar, but there is nobody to pilot them because we only have two pilots. So I think for us, for Congress to assist, is maybe we budget for a pilot to, so we have enough pilot to pilot both planes to take care of the needs for, to address the issues in Yap. And also at the same time, address the issues that our outer island people have also been neglected of. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman Romolo. Yes, indeed, those issues could be taken up by the TNC Committee to address, to find out more about, it's true, we don't have pilots. We have, it looks like we have planes, but we don't have pilots. So that's probably a big contribution to this lack of services to the other parts of the FSM. Yes, Chairman Panuelo.
Speaker, thank you. I want to thank the floor leader for raising this topic. I want to also give my support to the comments made by floor leader and Chairman Romolo. That's an important arm of the government created by law to service our outer islands, and I see the frustration that has been expressed. And I want to support the comment that, give oversight to make sure that they comply with what the audit recommendations were cited earlier in terms of fact that maybe, there may be conflicts in the staffing of the operation of this CIA airline. So thank you. So thank you, Speaker.
Thank you, Chairman Panuelo. Yes, we do have a port, governing port, and it's part of the responsibility to have also administrative oversight over the operations of Caroline Island Airs. We'll leave it at that if the Committee on TNC to its oversight works on it. Okay? Any other miscellaneous business? Chairman Wally, you were saying? Okay. If no further. Short recess. Short recess, subject to call of the chair. Congress back in session. We're still in on miscellaneous business. If there is, if nothing further, let's move down to next item. Announcements, Chairman Wally?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Your Committee on EXAF will have oversight hearing with the Department at 1:00 P.M. in the hearing room, and the oversight will be regarding anything and everything pertaining to the Department.
What time? I mean, today?
Thursday, I'm sorry. Thursday at 1:00 P.M. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman Wally. Take note, members of EXAF Committee, you have that hearing Thursday, 1:00, oversight with Department of Foreign Affairs. Okay, Chairman Figueroa? I like that, no announcement from Chairman Figueroa. Okay, Chairman Berman?
Thank you, Mrs. Speaker. Tomorrow, Wednesday, at 2:30, we will be having oversight with the Department of Health on grants and other matters, especially the Congressional Bill twenty dash ninety-nine and twenty dash one hundred. So we will be having oversight on those, and also on Friday, but I'll announce that right after tomorrow. Thank you, Mrs. Speaker.
Thank you, Chairman Berman. Take note, members of HSA Committee, you have oversight hearings tomorrow and maybe also Friday, that announcement will be made in tomorrow's session. Chairman Romolo?
Thank you, Speaker. Your Committee on CHMCO will hold oversight hearing on Tuesday at 2:30 with, as Chairman of EXAF said, on anything and everything in relation to employment, government operations. Thank you.
Thank you. That's a mouthful. I'm sure you can do it in one day. Tuesday, that's next week, right? Okay. Thank you. Chairman Panuelo?
Speaker, our staff is working on our notice of hearings, and just stay tuned for it. We have hearings coming up, and will be known by tomorrow. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman Panuelo. Oh, we're missing Chairman and Vice Chairman of TNC, so there is an announcement from them. Okay, Vice Speaker Moses, you have announcement?
Thank you, Speaker. Good morning to you and members, those observing. As per your suggestion that members meet in the members' lounge right after session, thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Okay, thank you, Vice Speaker. Take note, all members, meeting right after session in the lounge. Vice Speaker will be conducting that. Okay, Senator Ned? No announcement? Okay, Senator Aridos? Thank you, Senator Coleman? Okay, Floor Leader Harper, you have any announcement before you make your usual motion?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I just want to say that I want to provide lunch for today, but, you know, the representation for Floor Leader is exhausted, so I hope you reprogram as soon as possible. And now I move that we stand in recess until 10:00 A.M. tomorrow.
Let's move and second that Congress stand in recess until tomorrow at 10:00 in the morning. Those in favor of the motion, say yes. Post no. Motion carried. Congress now stands in recess until tomorrow at 10:00 in the morning.